Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the city council regular meeting for the city of Warrenville for February 20th, 2018. May I have your call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman is excused. Alderman Widener.
Here.
And Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
As part of our yearly budget process, we have two more presentations this evening. These presentations serve a couple of purposes. One, it helps the council keep up with what's going on in terms of what's coming and what's happened in the past year in our departments. And two, it helps the public, hopefully, watching these presentations, understand how much goes into our budget process. It's not just a matter of throwing some numbers at the wall and see which ones stick. It involves a lot of time and a lot of effort on the part of staff to put these things together. So we appreciate the fact that we have two good presentations coming tonight for the FY 2019 budget, beginning with the police department chief. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We're going to be doing a presentation tonight and basically going to be looking at a lot of the highlights that we've wanted to pinpoint for our 2019 fiscal year budget that we prepared. And also, we're going to look at some of the 2018 accomplishments that the police department did. And then looking well ahead into the future, because we always try to make sure that we keep our eyes on the road and look way out. Some of the major things that we're going to be looking at as we prepare to go into the 2020 fiscal year budget. So, without further, I'll go through these and then, as always, if there's any questions, be happy to try and answer those for you. Some of the top things that we're looking at right now is a new facility in Ducom. Right now, in our FY 19 budget, we are budgeted at our share of $18,315. And that would be for the construction and the staffing of this new 33,000 square foot facility, which is on County Line Road. This is expected to open in the fall of 2018. It's truly a state-of-the-art facility, and I would urge you, once it's open, if you get to take a tour, to go out there and take a tour of it, I think you'll be very impressed. Our Ducom contract, which we're going to be renewing for the year, is a very large expenditure. They provide all of our 911 dispatching services for the city. $362,791. It includes a cost of $11,337 and change for our 32 full-time officers. So that provides all of the dispatching service, the 911 calls, answering the calls after hours for the non-emergency number, and they also do the fire district, but that's, you know, the separate fire district issue that they deal with. Parking and traffic tickets. We went to a brand-new form for our parking in what we are going to be calling compliance and municipal ordinance tickets. We're budgeting $3,000 for that. One of the things that we had talked about in the past was the inability to be able to get accurate fine information from the clerk's office in DuPage County. And then when we were able to get that information, how such a disproportionate share of the fine revenues went to either the state, the DuPage County government, and other taxing bodies. And Warrenville got a very small percentage of that back. If I'm not mistaken, it was somewhere between $19 and $23 per citation on a $140 ticket that was sent in. So what we did was we looked at the Illinois compiled statutes, and with the help of our city attorney, we have the ability to adjudicate those through either our administrative adjudication procedure or to write them on a regular traffic ticket, and they go to circuit court. We took some of the lesser violations, things like distracted driving, occupant restraint, equipment violations, having expired license plates, basically anything that isn't a moving violation. We're going to be citing on what we call a compliance ticket. That person will have a certain amount of time to pay that ticket. It's going to be $100. All of that fine money will go to the city. This will also reduce the amount of money that we're paying in court time for the officers to attend court, because the adjudication will be held right here, and we'll be kicking that off on March 1st. And this will do things like fireworks compliance again, and just some of the other violations that I mentioned. But any of your serious violations, driving with a suspended or a revoked license, DUI, anything like that would be handled through the regular court where there'd be points assessed. In the event that anybody doesn't pay these tickets, we would do what we would normally do now with any other city bill that goes unpaid, and that would be, it would be to turn them to collections for retrieval of that money. Now, before the city, or excuse me, the circuit court, if you had a traffic ticket and you failed to pay the fine, they would issue a warrant for your arrest for failure to pay fine and costs. They no longer do that. So if a person would default on a payment, it would simply be an uncollected balance that the circuit court would not be able to get back, so we would lose the revenue. But we're going to track this carefully, because I think we're going to see a lot more benefit to the city for a couple of reasons. Number one, the additional fine revenue, it's going to be less expensive for the motorists if they get one of these citations for, say, using a cellphone than it would be if they had to go and appear in circuit court. And again, you're not going to have the issue of the inconvenience of having to go to Wheaton. So we're going to be doing that. We're going to be able to pay these tickets either by mail, online, or in person, so that it'll kind of coincide with some of the bills that we pay now, or people can pay now for the city. We're doing a crime alert notification hangar, and again, a proactive crime suppression or crime reduction initiative in that, you know, many times the officers will be out, especially on the night shift, they'll see a garage door open, maybe they'll be in a driveway for some reason for a call, they'll see a car unlocked, something like that. This is going to be a hang tag that the officer will fill out, noticing or documenting what type of issue they found, and they'll leave that on the door of the residence to show that the police were there. And if they have any questions, the officer obviously will leave his name, sign it, and there'll be a phone number where they can contact the officer if they want to speak further with them. But again, a good way of showing that we're out there and we're taking another step to try and deal with some of these issues that could potentially lead to victimization. We did very successfully start a medical recycling drop box, which is being handled through our distributor Stericycle, is picking up all of these discarded medications. We budgeted $5,500 for this. That was for the camera that we put in, so that we can actually see who's putting what into the box. It's a good idea to have it, especially when you're dealing with issues of drugs being in there, to make sure nobody tries to improperly open it and remove anything, it's just for dropping things into. It's a free service to the public. We have a potential for increased pickup service. We didn't think initially we would be able to have, there would be that much usage, but so far, we've had over 100 pounds of medications that have been collected. We're down now, or we've just initiated two pickups a month, so they're coming at like the 15th and the 30th of the month to do this. So it's been very, very well received. There was 82 pounds recycled, that was as of a couple of weeks ago, but we're over 100 pounds right now. Under dues and subscriptions in the budget line items, we're looking at net RMS. That would be $21,000. It'll be our new records management system. That was our second capital installment. We have an operational target date, which got pushed back to January of 2019. This was due to the interface from the software vendor. There's nothing wrong with the equipment, and there's nothing wrong with the software. It has to do with the interface between them and the different governmental agencies. And again, this will be one system that'll basically cover everything in the DuPage County government and the municipalities that are online with net RMS. So it's going to be a lot more expedient for us and for like the state's attorney's office and what have you, to get copies of reports, transmit evidence, and what have you. Court Smart, it's a web-based subscriber fee where we get current and continuous live case law updates. The law is continually changing with decisions that come out through the appellate courts. We were able to get these, and it features live video training. This will reach every officer every day, because it is wireless in the way that we can access this. They can get it through the mobile data terminal in the squad car. They're required as part of their ongoing training to log in, to watch these things. There is a quiz at the end, and all of this training is documented. This ensures that our officers have the latest training as far as up-to-date court decisions that are out there that affect the way that they have to do their jobs, day in and day We have National Night Out, which we budget $4,500 for. It's a promotional, those are basically promotional items and efforts, some of the event food, the entertainment vendors in National Night Out, sponsored banners, hats, and t-shirts. It's a great event, and most of all of you have come to that at one point or another. We're drawing around 1,400 people a year to come down to that event. It's been very well received. We hope to keep it going. I enjoy going every year, and it certainly looks like most of the families that are there have a good time. We're using public relations material as a way of outreach, and this is to bring awareness to residents. And we're doing a lot of this, it has to do with bicycle safety, Fourth of July safety, distracted driving, and other safety as determined, other safety areas, crime prevention resources, and holiday and seasonal concerns such as DUI and things like that. And when we say public relations material, basically, it's outreach things. It's cups, it's the magnets that you put on the refrigerator and what have you, is just like kind of a little constant reminder that we're handing out on traffic stops for the distracted driving especially. They were saying that that is the second highest cause of accidents in the country. That came through the National Highway Transportation and Safety Administration, falling even with driving while impaired under the influence of alcohol. So what we're really trying to do is get people to put those cell phones away when they're driving and pay attention to the task at hand. Recycling program, we're budgeting $1,500 for that. As you know, every day, we have an annual shredding day, which we do in May. This year, we have been able to contract with Stericycle if this is in fact approved in the budget. Stericycle will be there to handle the paper collection for the shredding day, but they will also be there to take in medication and certain electronic items. So if you have an old computer, a keyboard, a mouse, cables, cell phones, anything like that that you would like to recycle, you can drop them off when we have this event in May, and you can bring your prescription drugs, and you can also bring your paper items that you want shredded. We thought this would be a good way for a $1,500 fee to get a lot of these things that basically people would end up throwing in the garbage and get them recycled. The only thing, they will take it, although there is a higher cost, is televisions. If you have the big old console TVs, or the projection TVs, or even today, the LCD TVs because of, I guess, the mercury vapor that's in the screens, there's a higher fee, it can be up to $200. So we're not going to accept that at this particular event, but if you come with a laptop computer, or you come with a computer tower, or anything basically like that, or old clocks, alarm clocks, and what have you, that you want to get rid of, then they'll be able to take that and recycle that. What we did do in the way of safety for our officers and also for the community, personal protective equipment, we've budgeted $1,500 for this. You've read about the issue with fentanyl that's going on and the overdosing hazard that that poses. Well, this is particularly true for law enforcement people. There was a call in West Chicago that we assisted on where three officers were potentially exposed to this being loose in the air. Essentially, what had happened was they found the person that had overdosed, the person was on a couch. When they rolled the person over to administer the fentanyl, they had a bag of it in their hand that went on the carpet, it became airborne. They had to have other police jurisdictions and ambulances go there to administer fentanyl to the officers because they had been exposed to it. What we're doing now is we're supplying every officer with the personal protection equipment. Whenever we find anything that we suspect to be cocaine, heroin, whatever you in a car, we immediately have to don the garb, which includes a respirator mask, gloves, booties, and also the disposable attire. It's to be packaged and not collected and brought into the station. They have it weighed, but we're going to have one of these for every officer, and then the biohazard trash bag that goes with it, that when they're done, they put it in there, and then it'll be disposed of properly. Since we are near a river and there's access to water, we have a throw bag that you can use for a water rescue. This can even be used in some of the retention ponds if somebody would fall through the ice. It'll support up to 1,900 pounds. It has a floating rope. It's basically a flotation bag where you're able to throw it out to a person if they grab onto it. The internal foam flotation keeps the bag on top of the water so that it doesn't sink. So in the event when those initial moments are there and they're critical, if you have to get somebody out of a body of water, you'd be able to throw them this bag. And again, for the amount of money, $1,200, we'll have these in all of the squad cars. One of the biggest complaints that we get all the time is speeding, and especially on residential streets. We have a speed trailer right now. It also serves as a message board. We'd be keeping that, because the message board function is very, very useful to us. But what we have here, and we've put in for, is two of these trailers, which would be about $15,800. These are stocker speed awareness monitors. And the reason that we would want two is many times, we get several calls to do speed studies, especially on side streets in the warmer months. And we have found that with the big trailer, it doesn't give us that ability. This, if you put it out at a location, it gives you a nice management report with a number of vehicles. It gives you the speed of those vehicles, then it'll compute for you an average speed of the vehicles that cross there. The other thing that I think is pretty interesting is if you can see, whoop-de-doo, here we go, if you can see, and we don't have, is the laser in here, Christine, or no?
Yeah.
The what?
The top one.
Okay. If you can see right in here, you're going to have flashing red and blue strobe lights. And what that'll do is that, say we're in a 25 mile an hour speed limit, we can set that for like 32 miles an hour, so there'd be seven miles over. If you go 33 miles an hour, what's going to happen is these are going to start flashing continually to get their driver's attention, and we don't know at this point, they may think that we're doing automated speed monitoring. I know that they have used these in other communities. They're very, very effective, not only from the data that you get from the vehicles, but also as far as slowing vehicles down. They do have solar panels with a battery that is recharged, so you're able to use these. They're more energy efficient, they're much lighter, they're easier to transport, and this would be something that we would be using almost on a daily basis if we had these out and about in the community. We put in for four handheld radar units. These will be on a state purchase order, $4,950. Current units are 15-plus years old. These have newer and better technology. Basically, it works in a combination of the radar and the lidar, so you can really focus these, target aim them at a specific vehicle and get that. So we use our speed enforcement things quite a bit. We used to use a lot of the in-car moving radar. We have found that since we have gotten traffic, and traffic has become heavier, making U-turns sometimes presents a hazard for the officer if he's clocking traffic going in the opposite way and he's moving. So we're doing a lot more of the stationary radar, and if you see one of these, they're really, they're pretty nifty, they're pretty small, about the size of a hair dryer, not that I need one anymore, but when I did. So they're pretty small, and they're portable, and you can take them from car to car, and again, something that we use on a regular basis. We look at our traffic counters and our truck scale plates. The traffic counters are when we do extended speed studies, and we'll do these a lot of times in conjunction with public works when people are requesting that we take a look at reducing a speed limit on a certain street. We put these plates out there, and we'll leave them out there for a period of, you know, seven days to 10 days. We're recording the amount of traffic, the volume, the traffic speed, and also we'll get an aggregate speed as far as what would a mean would be, an average. One nice thing, the ones that we have now are basically over 20 years old. We use these on a regular basis. The nice thing about this is we get all this information, and it'll be Bluetooth wirelessly downloaded to a computer where we can print it out, rather than having to basically bring the unit in and plug it in. We can go out with a laptop computer, and we can basically download this at the site. We can get a daily read on this information. The truck scale plates, we're looking at four of the portable plates. It's an $18,000 expenditure. These are certified scales that we use to weigh overweight trucks or suspected overweight trucks. And you're probably saying, why do you have four plates? Well, if you've ever noticed on a semi-tractor trailer, you have the tractor, which is the part with the engine in it that pulls the trailer. And if you look at the trailer, you have multiple sets of axles. Well, the way the state code is written is that you can have overweight for the gross overweight of the vehicle, you can overhave, and you can also have overweight on an axle, which means that the truck is loaded improperly, it may be heavier in the rear or heavier in the front. And any one of these things can affect the handling characteristic of the vehicle, and it becomes a safety issue as far as the overall weight, it can cause damage to the roadways. But we use these regularly, our truck enforcement officers, and where you'll see them set up most of the time is on Sipla Drive, right behind the police station. We'll take an overweight truck, we bring them in there, and we do the weighing with the portable scales, rather than have to drive them to Fermi Lab to use the scales there. Scales do have to be certified through the Illinois Department of Agriculture for them to be used as evidence if the officer writes a ticket. And again, the ones that we have now, they're old. We look at, we've had them repaired in the past, but they've basically reached their The other high priority item that we got, and it's an $18,888 expenditure, would be replacing 17 AR-15 rifles. Last year, we replaced the handguns. What we looked at this year with the rifles that we did have in stock, they're better than 20 years old, probably 25 years old. Many of them are different manufacturers. We have some Smith &amp; Wesson, they have some Bushmaster, they have some DPMS, so we have a conglomeration of different makes. Also, the rifles that we have are not what we would call professional-grade quality rifles. And by that, I mean, if you go into a local sporting goods store, you can buy an AR-15 rifle, and you can get one for $600 or $700. And that'll serve your needs if you're going to go out and you're going to shoot it occasionally. But if you look at a military-grade weapon, which is going to have a lot of durability, a lot of longevity, and it's going to last you for years to come, you're going to have things like a chrome lined barrel, it's going to be a chrome bolt and bolt carrier, much heavier duty components. It's basically what they call mil spec. It would be something that would meet the military specifications set forth by our armed services. Lewis Machine and Tool, which is an Illinois company, was willing to give us a 33% discount. These rifles would go for over $2,000 apiece. They're giving them to us for the 17 rifles for about $1,400 apiece, along with a spare parts inventory, and they're also going to train six of our officers as armorers at no cost to the city for that. The anticipated life of these rifles would be somewhere in the area of 25 to 40 years with the wear that we would give them. But again, it's a much higher quality. I guess the best way I could explain it, it'd be like if you bought a tool to do home improvement work, and then you bought a contractor's grade or a professional quality tool. That professional quality tool is going to be able to run harder, it's going to be able to run longer, and it's going to be much more durable. And we look at some of our 2018 accomplishments, and we had a number. We really don't realize how much of the stuff that we get involved in until we start jotting it down at the end of the year. But we've had our traffic safety initiatives, what we've done at varying times throughout the year. And we had Illinois Distracted Drivers Awareness Week, that was Illinois' first ever. We do seatbelt, truck enforcement, and traffic signal and traffic sign enforcement. We do speed and holiday DUI enforcement, and when I say holiday, it's not just New Year's Eve, but we look at things like the night before Thanksgiving, which is one of the biggest bar nights in, you know, the state as far as the consumption of people that go out and drink. We'll be looking at things like the Fourth of July, when the warmer weather on the weekends, we'll have officers working later to do these things. We hired three officers, so right now, we're up to full staffing. We had a sergeant's promotional exam. We had one sergeant, or excuse me, one corporal serve as a class supervisor at suburban law enforcement academy for a basic recruit class. We have a police explorer academy. We have 80% of our patrol officers, our crisis intervention team, trained. We're going to have our other 20% trained this year, so they'll all be crisis intervention team trained. Our officers and squads are equipped with personal protection equipment. We completed transition and training to the nine-millimeter sidearm. We did our weight room configuration that was approved in the current budget that we're operating under. With our community-based initiatives, we had National Night Out, we did our Toys for Tots, Shop with a Cap, Special Olympics. We raised over $6,000 from the torch run, the cap on the rooftop and tip a cap. We do our neighborhood roll call, neighborhood bike registration, bike and walk to school day, bike rodeo participation. And for the upcoming year, we're in the process of preparing a grant that we're going to submit to the state to get a $1,000 grant amount if you hold a bicycle safety program at or near the location where you've had accidents. So we're thinking a good place to be would be 59 and Continental. We're going to be contacting the courtyard banquets and see if we can do a bike rodeo or a bicycle safety day there when we get this grant approved, and we'll be doing that as the weather gets warmer. But that'll be a good thing for the kids and just anybody who wants to be exposed to some bicycle safety tips. Working bikes donations, found and unclaimed bicycles. We have certified child passenger safety technicians. Two of our officers have been trained into the proper way to install a child's safety seat in your vehicle, and also to inspect to make sure they're done properly. Our officers attended the Illinois Police Officers Memorial in Springfield. That was a volunteer effort, they went on their own time. And we visited a young patient who was at the Proton Center. We put that on Facebook, we gave him some memorabilia, a police patch, and a great, great young man, and it was, it was, it was nice to see that it made him feel good, so. Investigations and administration are our 2018 accomplishments. With the help of our city attorney, we updated the ordinance language and fine structure in our city code. We had our new ticket format I talked a little bit about. We established the massage business licensing process. We went through records disposal and evidence room audit, our MSI software upgrade, and that software basically takes care of all of the parking tickets that we write in the city and also our city ordinance violations. We transitioned to the DuPage County Sheriff's Office for a hold of all of our outstanding warrants. We did this for a cost-saving measure. We did this for a cost-saving measure. And really, it's when we would get a warrant signed by somebody, they were in the habit of keeping them here at the police department. Well, that's great until you get somebody that they got apprehended in Springfield, Illinois, and now we've got to send officers down there to go pick somebody up to bring them back. So we take our warrants right now and we lodge them with the DuPage Sheriff's Office since they have a warrant apprehension team. When those people are arrested, those sheriff's deputies will go down to whatever county that Springfield may be in or Cook County or what have you and pick up those prisoners. So what it does is it saves us the expense and the time from taking officers from Warrenville to go and pick up people that are wanted on warrants. We had 19 seized vehicles in the 2017 calendar year. We had three 464 seizures. Those are the drug seizures that are done through the courts. Medical recycling drop box, our Internet transaction safety zone. We put on an opioid and fentanyl seminar here for everybody this year. We conducted workplace violence and critical incident response training at Phonax, panic alarms installation within the police department, and a couple of committees that I got nominated and elected to. And when we look lastly, again, at 2019 going into our 2020 fiscal year, we're going to be looking at our administrative adjudication for more minor offenses to see what else we can, we can take through that particular network for adjudicating these things. We're going to be doing our proactive fireworks initiatives in this week's weekly report. I wrote a quick, a quick blurb on that along with a copy of the sample letter that went out to all the homeowners' associations. We're going to have our citywide enterprise resource program that you've heard the Assistant City Administrator and Finance Director talk about quite a bit. We're going to have to establish a new patrol officer recruit eligibility list. We're going to start with the preliminary investigation of officer-worn body cameras, which hopefully, within the next budget, we're going to have some figures to be able to present to the council. And we're going to assess, because of the number of things that we're doing, the number of events, the number of programs and what have you, we're going to, we're going to assess the need of potentially staffing that vacant administrative sergeant position at the police department to try and basically keep our head even with the water. So with that, if there's any questions that I can answer for you, I would be happy to do so.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the council? Or how about the treasurer, Larry?
I've got two questions. Number one is on the adjudication ticket process, where would the person go to challenge the ticket?
Right here. They could either come right here to the adjudication hearing, or if they decided to come here and they wanted to, they could have the ticket transferred out to Circuit Court where it could be heard.
When they were figuring the cost for the DuCom, your share of DuCom, is it prorated based on the size of the police force?
Yeah, it's per officer, per full-time sworn officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Wiener?
Thanks, Chief. It was a very informative and enlightening report. And congratulations to you and your staff for all the accomplishments. And I just have some questions with regard to the priorities that weren't necessarily in the police department priorities. You're purchasing traffic counters and truck scale plates. And I'm just wondering whether you anticipate with the amount of truck traffic, I guess we're seeing in the community, whether you're anticipating any boost in the enforcement activities with regards to trucks?
Well, whenever, you know, whenever you're going to have more truck traffic, you potentially have the possibility of having more violations. We use the OX cart permit system, and I think you're going to see a real increase in that, especially with the amount of development. But one of the things, I do think that we're going to see additional enforcement. And the reason being is not, not even contractors working on developmental projects here, but in many instances, it becomes a cost of doing business for trucking companies or contractors to try and get as much as they can loaded onto their truck. But those overweight trucks can become a real hazard as far as their ability to stop and maneuver when they're traveling on the highway. I'm not a truck enforcement officer, but, you know, they go to a certified school where they're trained in that, and they look for certain issues that have to do with the way those vehicles are loaded, with the way those vehicles will move when they're coming from a stop and starting to accelerate. And, you know, they're very diligent, although you, there's, there's a real amount of expertise that you have to have to do truck enforcement because it has to do with the type of license plate they got on there and the length of the trailer and the gross vehicle weight and all sorts of things. So they're basically pulling trucks over on a regular basis. And one of the things that they do when they do these, these truck stops is they do a safety inspection, which has to do not only with the weighing of the vehicle, but inspecting certain key components like brakes, tires, checking their logbooks and what have you. So do I think it'll be used a lot? Yeah, I do. And I do see an increase potentially, yes.
Great. And then with the traffic counters, I guess I have a sheer concern over the amount of cut-through traffic that we're seeing in Warrenville. And I, for one, would be real interested in seeing any kind of the reports that are gathered because with, you know, cars carrying GPS units and everybody following these different traffic programs where they can detail out while they're driving the shortest distance to wherever they're going, I think that we're seeing, you know, excessive amounts of speeding in some of the side, side streets and some of these cut-through areas. So I think it would be really interesting for the council as you get this program up and running to just see, you know, what we're finding out and where the problem areas might be and, you know, how we might prioritize an action plan with, with those issues.
Yeah, I can, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I can certainly include that on both the carts because you'll have that ability to get management reports, and I can certainly include that as weekly report items when we have these out to basically say they were at this location for X amount of duration and X number of cars, average speed and what have you.
Great. And then I'd just like to congratulate, I guess, you and your staff with the quick reaction and turnaround, particularly with the massage business licensing. You took quick action and I think we kind of turned that situation around and made some real steady progress on those businesses. So I congratulate everybody who had anything to do with that. It was an nearly immediate reaction and I think it provided some quick solutions to that, that issue. And also, I'd just like to congratulate your staff for, you know, not only the enforcement initiatives, you know, because they always show themselves as being very professional anytime I've run across them as law enforcement officers, but they were also doing a great job of being involved in the community with the, you know, community-based initiatives, you know? I think, you know, you've put yourself in a position where your department is not seen as like the enemy enforcement department. They're seen as part of the community. They're seen as helpers. They're seen as individuals who will be there if somebody is in need, you know, with, you know, Home Alone programs and things like that. So I'd just like to congratulate you, you know, and your, and your department for becoming such an integral part of the fabric of the Warrenville community. I don't think all law enforcement departments are like that. So thanks for all the good work.
Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
Just a question. How many of our officers are bilingual?
Yeah, five or six. Five or six that are bilingual.
Okay. That's a pretty good percentage of our.
Yeah, we, last year, we tabulated it and we have, right around 34% of our officers are minority. So in, out of that, we have five or six that are Hispanic-speaking. One of our officers speaks Polish.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Berry?
I like the, in your 2018 accomplishments, this crime alert notification hangers. I think that's a really good idea. There's a lot of people that go around and check cars in the middle of the night to see if, you know, cars are unlocked and things like that. And I think people need to be aware that, you know, they are leaving their cars unlocked or, you know, people are wandering around near their garages or around through their back areas if their gates are open or something. And if the police can see it, obviously someone else can see it. And that's what people need to know. Warrenville is a safe community, but this little extra will always help, you know? So I, I really appreciate that. Of course, on the AK-15 rifles.
Oh, the AR-15s?
The AR-15.
Yes.
It says on here that the manufacturer buys back the old rifles.
That's correct.
What do they do with them, then?
They'll either melt them down or they become the owner of it. They're a federal firearms dealer or they have the ability to sell them if they want to. But they're giving us a trade-in value.
Because of everything that's happened in the last week or so with shootings at the high school and with these assault weapons that are sold to the public, basically, I don't know the amount that we're given back, you know, for the trading in of these rifles. But maybe there's a way that we can actually take these rifles and get rid of them in order for them not to be, to be resold somewhere else eventually. And, you know, if we can help by saving somebody not to get a gun, I think that would be something that we would be very proud of. So I think that's something we should look at.
We can do that. I think it'd be between, excuse me, for the, for the number of rifles we have now, which is 17, it'd be between $400 and $4,500 that we'd be getting on a trade-in for those. And that's why I included that because most of the time, if we're able to get any type of a trade-in for the current property we have now, we would, we would take that measure rather than just moving to have them destroyed.
I would think that the council would kind of need to consider whether we really need that $4,500 trade-in or do we need to have these rifles removed from the public being able to purchase them?
Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I agree with what Alderman Berry was saying, and I would lean more towards destroying them rather than, you know, taking a relatively small amount of money and taking the risk they'll get back on the streets. As you've discussed, this is a professional's weapon. It's a military-style weapon. And, you know, selling that to the public is a little bit different than saying we want our police officers to be armed with weapons like this. And obviously, this is the first time we've heard about this proposed project, so I haven't given it a lot of thought yet, but that's my initial reaction. What about the ammo? When we sold back the handguns, they also bought back the ammo.
That's correct.
So in this case, we would also be able to sell the ammo?
Well, no, because we would be able to, it's the same caliber. We would be able to use it in this rifle. So we would keep our ammunition.
No, no change of ammo unlike the handguns?
That's true.
Okay. So you said that these have a longer lifespan and would be more durable. But didn't you also say that most of these rifles we already have are about 20 to 25 years and that the expected lifespan is about 20 to 25 years?
That's correct, but they haven't been fired anywhere near the amount that we're doing now with these rifles. And the reason being is that whenever you have a weapon like this, they're very powerful weapons and you have to train fairly extensively with these things. So when we're going to go out and shoot these at a range day or what have you, these guns may be getting four to 600 rounds put through them a day. Those other guns were never shot to that degree. And like I said, it's, it's basically the difference between a contractor, or excuse me, a homeowner-grade tool and a professional-quality, a contractor-grade tool. This because of certain things that I mentioned, the chrome-lined bore, which will resist corrosion and it's much more durable, the bolt and the bolt carrier, which are integral to the operating of this gun because it's a gas system. There was called MPI or magnetic particle inspected, where they're basically looked at with a spectrum microscope to make sure that there's no fissures or anomalies with the metals that are used and when they, when they actually forge those particular components. So again, it was just something, looking at the age of the rifles that we had now. And if we had to start getting involved in upgrading them with new barrels, new stacks, new this, new that, you're going to be laying out a significant amount of money for a weapon that is of mediocre quality. Usually, police departments don't buy things like those particular brand rifles that I mentioned when, you know, you're using them in a situation, they're out on the street every day and what have you.
Right. The $600-ish price range rifles that you mentioned.
Yeah, $600, right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, twice the price is a lot more, so it better be worth it, I guess, is what we would say, trying to steward taxpayer dollars wisely. Back on the speed trailer issue that Alderman Wiener was talking about, you said you might be using these every day. Do you mean just in the summer months?
Well, no, we wouldn't put them out, obviously, if it snows because it's hard to be able to find a location to put them in. But even in the fall, these are something because even if it's not a matter of getting a complaint at a specific location, I think that if you have these there, it raises awareness, especially with the idea that you have those flashing lights that if you go over a certain amount of speed. And I think it's always a good idea to be able to keep a handle on exactly how much volume of traffic are we getting down this particular road and what is the average speed so that even if somebody doesn't particularly complain with that, you know, we'll have some information that we can compile that these, these trailers were out on certain dates and we were gathering this information.
All right. I mean, I'm concerned about flashing lights and distracted driving, but I have some experience with very similar sorts of trailers. There's one, they, they have at Fermi Lab, and it's always in the exact same spot. So I think leaving it there for months and I suppose even years on end seems like a very bad idea to me, people ignore it.
Yeah. No, you move them around. To permanently locate them somewhere is not a good idea.
Yeah. The one at Fermi Lab, I don't think is used to its best capacity, and I'd like to see us do something different. Let's see. The, the question about, what does it mean to train officers as armorers?
They can service the weapons. They can replace parts. You know, basically, they could sit there and if something broke on, on the rifle rather than having to send it to the manufacturer. They have been trained by the manufacturer of the weapon at the factory, which is in here in Illinois. And they could, it would be a factory-authorized repair because these, these officers have been trained on how to repair the weapon, diagnose the problem and repair it so that it's done properly.
Okay. And then moving on to the fiscal year 2019 priorities, you mentioned assessing whether or not we want to staff the vacant administrative sergeant position. In the past, that position was used primarily with regard to the red light cameras. So is there, I mean, just in connection with this, is there some thought by the police department to reapply for more red light cameras?
I really don't think at this point in time we did after the three-year limit. I can't remember exactly what year when they reconfigured Butterfield Road and we had the camera at Winfield and we had the camera at Route 59, I believe. And they indicated that there wasn't the volume of traffic and accidents that would warrant that. I don't see that happening. But the one thing, and I did mention here, is that if we look at those officer-body-worn cameras, we're going to, we're going to have a whole different issue where it has to do with the, the data that's collected, the film, the video, and also the amount of FOIAs that we're going to get and the ability to be able to review that and get out certain segments that are going to be FOIA-ed and pixelate whoever may be in the background of those to remove the identity of their faces and then comply with the FOIA request. And just again, the number of things that we do with these, these different events and programs and, and something as simple as that medication box took about three weeks. By the time you're negotiating a contract with the camera and we get the contract and we send it to the attorney and then we get it back and we want a change in it and it's got to go back to the vendor and then it's getting somebody to come in and install the thing. And then it's negotiating the contract with Stericycle and they have them pick it up and the location. And it just takes a lot of time, all these things that sound like they're fairly simple and it's like, here, you're getting a free box, just put it there. Well, it's, there's more to it. And, and we're getting to the point with the different administrative functions that we handle that really our span of control with that administrative deputy chief, he's getting really, really stretched thin with the amount of stuff that he's responsible for, including all the, the records clerk. And we got that big project coming in with the, you know, the new, the Dugis thing with the new Net RMS and the CAD and everything else. So again, it's just something that, like anything else, when the programs are always great, unfortunately, people drive the programs and that's what keeps it running and running smoothly.
All right. Well, I want to say, just to conclude, that I- Well, I want to say, just to conclude, that I really congratulate the police department on many of their wonderful initiatives. They do such a great job with their outreach to the public. National Night Out is a joy and a delight, and I think that people really appreciate that kind of contact with our police department, and so many other events that I go to over the course of the year, from the tip-a-cop to the cop-on-the-rooftop. You know, I think the one thing that I would say, just sort of as a comment, is that we should publicize more the fact that we have this Internet safe zone for transactions, because that is such a wonderful resource to have here in the community. I've used it myself several times in the past couple of years, when my husband was trying to sell his car, and it made us feel so much safer about meeting these strangers, some of whom were trying to scam my husband about buying his car. And we, at one point, were meeting a prospective buyer at the Wheaton Police Station instead, and it was just not the same experience at all. They're not set up as an Internet safe zone. The police there didn't really know what I was talking about. You know, the Warrenville Police have been great about it. So if anything, I feel like we need to make sure more people in our community know about that. Internet transactions are only going to increase, and people should be taking advantage of this great resource.
And that's a good point that you brought up, with this proposed, again, for, you know, next budget, not the one that we're putting together and going to propose, but a year from now. With that administrative sergeant's position, it will allow us to do a lot more on Facebook, because basically, that person can assume a majority of that, to do the postings of the information and getting more of this out there. Again, it's just a matter of, you don't not want to do it, it's just a matter of finding enough hours in the day to be able to get all this information and then get it on there. So, point taken. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Well done, Chief. Thank you. I agree with all the positive comments that were said, and I appreciate the great initiatives from the department year after year.
Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation for the Finance Department by our Finance Director, Kevin Dollstrand. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They've saved the least cool department for last, by many people's opinions. Of course, I'm not into cool, but that's okay. We want to discuss some of the things that we've accomplished during this last year. First thing was the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our 2016 cafer was the twenty-fourth of those we've received. We're anticipating announcement any day that our 2017 report will qualify for our twenty-fifth consecutive award. We should be receiving that announcement any time within the next few weeks, and we'll make sure that we get an announcement out, because I think that's a very good achievement for us, to have twenty-five consecutive years of financially reporting excellence. The Enterprise Resource Planning Selection Program has hit the point now where we're reviewing our contracts. Leo Beltran, our senior accountant, did an excellent job of shepherding our staff through that process, which has been long and exhaustive. We've spent many, many hours in meetings, and many, many hours reviewing documents, including all of the proposed contracts, and all of the statements of work, which we will present at an upcoming meeting next month, after all the reviews have been done. The attorneys have completed their review at this point. We are now back to staff reviewing what they've shown to us as things they need adjusted, or suggested that we adjust. We will then be meeting with the contract director as well, as we try to iron out those things as well. These documents, there are a considerable amount of them with a lot of detail. We want to make sure that we iron all those out ahead of time. We have one chance to do this right. You want to get it right on the front end. We want to make sure that both sides understand exactly what we're trying to accomplish, and what each of us are expected to do with that. During the year, we also changed our pension fund benefit administrators. Everything that involves now with the Warrenville Police Pension Fund is handled by Lauterbach and Amon. Any police officer who comes and wants to buy back time that they had previously, they no longer have to come to us. They go directly to Lauterbach and Amon. They have a portal that allows them to do that. Lauterbach and Amon staff then, which there are numerous individuals in their employ who do all that, they're able to work through that a lot quicker than we ever could with a lot more efficiency. Finally, we worked with the Community Development Department to refund a lot of the deposits and bonds. Over the last year, we've refunded one thousand three hundred and forty-three deposits or bonds, and a total of about two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't sound like a whole lot, except that a lot of those are one-hundred-dollar deposits. So you have to handle all those and process all of those. So there were many weeks where we, there were piles of those that we went through, and all that has been done. So I'd like to thank the Community Development Department for their help, and Kathy Wirehouses in my department, who did handle the majority of those and make sure that they got out and processed. And there was a lot of work involved in those. There were some challenges that we experienced during this year as well. The first one was the meter-reading system conversion. The water and sewer division changed the equipment that they use to read water meters in individuals' homes. And it works extremely well for them. What hasn't worked so well is the interface between that software and our billing software. I've spent the better part of the last ten months trying to herd cats with these two companies to make sure that they're able to talk to each other. We still do not have it resolved. Every time we think we have a piece of it fixed, another piece seems to not quite work right. So there's a lot of programming involved. It's been difficult. We're dealing with two systems that aren't as flexible as we'd like them to be, as how they talk to each other, and it's been extremely hard to get those two to work with each other. And we'll keep working at it until we get that resolved. The telephone system replacement project has not been a huge issue for us, although I was involved in all of the demos we went through. It did take some time to work through all of that. And then, we also experienced a little bit of player change on the other side of the equation, from some of the presenters that slowed down that process as well. And you'll see that we've had to roll that into next year. We won't get that accomplished by the end of this year at all. Also, the compensation study data. Assistant Administrator White and I have spent a considerable amount of time working with our consultants, making sure that all the data has been correctly added up, correctly categorized and reviewed, and making sure that everything actually adds up the way it's supposed to. We've actually spent more time on that than I think we anticipated, but we are nearing the end of that project as well. For 2019, we have two goals that are interrelated. It's the ERP. You've heard about it a lot. You'll hear about it a lot more. Related to that, you'll see two decision packages from the Finance Department. One is for the actual acquisition and implementation of the ERP, and the second one will be for the use of a project manager to assist us through that process. There simply aren't going to be enough hours for the current staff to be able to both function as these subject matter experts, and get the proper process to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. I can't run both the project and make sure that all the general ledger accounts are working correctly and set up correctly, and still herd everybody else. There's simply not going to be enough hours in the day to do that, so we'd be proposing the use of a project manager to assist us with that. Our next big piece of that, and related to that, is to make sure that all the core responsibilities of the department are still met. We're going to work on the ERP for many, many hours, but we still have to collect water bills, and still issue accounts payable checks, and issue payroll. All that still has to be done. So we're going to, we have a decision package again, which is pretty much the same one we did for 2018, which would provide us with some temporary staffing to help with such things that are closing out every month, when we do the accounting. We'll have some help with payroll. We may need some help with accounts payable. All those things that we do regularly and pay for granted, that they will get done, we're going to need some help to do that. So we'll be proposing that we do have some help to do that. Those two things are going to take a vast majority of our time, particularly the ERP. It's approximately seven thousand hours of staff time over the next fourteen months to get that done. Now, that includes both the core things, which are your accounting, your HR and payroll. There'll also be about another eight hundred, I think it's eight-hundred-and-eighty hours of time for the community development piece of that as well, and that's more than we'll present, when we present the whole package next month. If there are any questions, I can try to answer those for you.
Alderman Goodman?
So will the meter-reading conversion issue be fixed by the ERP, or is that an entirely different third kind of software?
That is a third piece of it. The water billing is not related in any way to the ERP. There is no water billing solution proposed as part of the ERP at this time. It's too highly specialized a program to be included in the ERP. We will need, in the future, to go out for an RFP to replace the utility billing software as well, but that won't come until we're done with the ERP. And so the billing itself is going to have to function the way it is right now.
So we are going to have to struggle along with it for a little longer, and then hopefully throw it out and get something better?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. One of the things that the Chief talked about had to do with doing payment for tickets ourselves, instead of going through the circuit court for some of that. So how much of that is being handled by your department?
They will have the option, there's an online option to pay, and they can also pay down at our front counter as well. We'll be collecting those. We will not be the point of where you can argue, a ticket, all we're going to be is the money repository. If there's any argument, that needs to go to another department. We will be handling those payments downstairs.
Okay, so is that going to take up very much Finance Department's staff time?
It will take some, because at this point, we don't know the volume of that. We assume there will be some increase from what we do now, because we don't really handle any of those downstairs at this point.
Right, I mean, it's just going to be a change, so.
Yes, correct.
All right, so you'll report back to us on?
Absolutely.
How that goes?
Yep.
Because if it hasn't started, he said, March 1st?
It's starting March, yeah.
Yeah, then people will be coming in pretty soon, and we'll have to handle it.
Correct.
And I know your department is already overstretched, so adding one more thing to the pile.
Okay.
All right, well, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Treasurer?
Kevin, when you're putting in your additional hours for your 2019 objectives, is this going to be a contract work?
The preventive, the, not preventive maintenance, the project manager will be a contract employee. Will need somebody from outside to make sure we're doing what we're doing. And also, the additional staff will be as needed as well, and done with a contractual arrangement as well.
So you're talking about hiring an additional body?
Hiring is not the word I would use. Contracting for additional bodies is what I would use, because they won't be city employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Kevin, you've got your work cut out for you. Thanks so much for all your efforts thus far, and I know you'll do well in the coming year.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to our citizens' comments portion of the meeting. Mr. Bob Seibert signed up this evening.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. At the recent public hearing, I asked a question. I asked, what is the total dollar amount of the investment? Immediately, John Davis stated, you do not have to answer that question. No explanation, just telling the developer, you do not have to answer that question. I have great concerns about that action, since it was a public hearing, since I was asking a question that was necessary to determine the return in revenue to the city, and benefits and costs. However, one individual, the chairman, stated, don't answer the question. I believe in the public hearing, the city should be promoting knowledge and information, not restricting knowledge and information. I was able to attain the figures that I was looking for, but without the assistance of the city of Warrenville.
Thank you, Bob. I was at that public hearing, and I believe the question you asked the developer was, what was his cost for the project, which might be proprietary, rather than what the actual value of the project was? At least, that's how I remember it.
When you read it, you will see, I asked for the total investment.
Right, his investment.
And the investment is the same figure that the assessors, or any of the tabulation on the revenue to the different taxing districts would be looking at. And he was later available to give me those figures, and I'm assured that those were the figures. There's no reason that he, as a developer, would even care about that, because they're looking to publicize and to market that it's a huge investment, as opposed to a cheaper investment.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Two things this evening. One, the city is currently accepting applications for Public Works' summer help positions. These positions are temporary, lasting from around May to August, and are great for students who are home during the summer, tasks including mowing, weeding, trimming, and weed whipping, general custodial work, and manual labor activities. Applicants over eighteen years old are encouraged to apply before March 2nd. So there's some employment opportunity for the summer for people who might be interested in that. Also, coming up soon is the State of the City address. All are invited to attend this on Wednesday, February 28th, in the City Hall Council chambers. Light refreshments will be provided by the Western DuPage Chamber of Commerce, beginning at 6:00 p.m., followed by the presentation by the mayor, beginning at 6:30 p.m. This great event to learn about the city's past year's accomplishments, and opportunities to look forward to the next year. So everyone is welcome again. That's all I have this evening. Clerk? Thank you, Emily Treasurer. And Alderman? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I just wanted to announce a seminar that's being offered by District 200. It's going to be tomorrow night at seven o'clock at Monroe Middle School. It's How to Raise Resilient Children. They're doing a whole series of parenting seminars, and this one's going to be specifically about promoting healthy goal-setting motivation, school engagement, and managing anxiety for teenagers. And I think we all know, given some of the events in the world, how important those issues are right now. So I hope that some parents in our community are going to be able to attend. Sounds like a great presentation. There's further presentations coming up in March and April, on how to keep your child safe when they're using a smartphone, and Parents, Teens, Parties, and the Law. That'll be in April. So I congratulate them on their outreach efforts, and hope they have a good turnout.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Baffier?
Yeah, just wanted to say some prayers for a couple families. We lost a firefighter that was old-time, Bob McGaffey, and he had a lot of rescues in town that people will never forget, so. And Linda Linford's husband passed, and just wanted to say prayers are with them families.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else? Okay, Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
And Attorney?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Barrett. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda for the February 20th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Wilson. Any changes proposed by any Aldermen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. The agenda is approved as presented. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener.
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting, and motion to approve the minutes of the February 12th, 2018 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, thank you. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-05 authorizing disposal of city-owned surplus property utilizing open-off auction services. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-06 approving a grant of easement to DuPage County for sewer in Leon Schmidt Heritage Park. C, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2018-04 rescinding resolution R2017-41 in its entirety. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-05 approving the contract with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the West Three Basin of River Siphon infiltration and inflow investigation in the amount of $47,856, and authorize the city administrator to execute the proposal. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-06 approving a contract with Thomas Engineering Group LLC for the land and road sanitary sewer reconstruction design engineering services in the amount of $33,355, and authorize the city administrator to execute the proposal. F, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2018-07 approving the bid for Achilles Security Access System at the Public Works Building from Phoenix Systems of Carroll Stream, Illinois, in the amount of $33,184. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement for light maintenance with the Warrenville Public Library District, and prepare a bill of sale to approve the ownership transfer of the 11 streetlights from the library to the city. H, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to begin recruitment efforts for a full-time administrative services coordinator in the Administration Department, and a full-time civil engineer in the Community Development Department. I, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to advertise for bids for the 2018 road program prior to formal approval of the fiscal year 2019 budget. J, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to research grant funding opportunities to design and construct street lighting improvements at the Route 59 intersection with the Meadow Avenue and Continental Drive. K, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve a $500 advertisement for the 11th Annual Wheaton-Warnsville South High School Coral Classic. L, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and appoint Alderman Bavir as an alternate to the Economic Development Representatives. M, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on January 9th, 2018. N, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on January 16th, 2018. O, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on February 8th, 2018. P, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 14th, 2018, in the amount of $72,368.32. Q, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before March 5th, 2018, in the amount of $185,308.21. And I, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of January 2018 in the amount of $7,182.12. Alderman Widener.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Mayor O'Call, please.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved for this evening. We will move on to the regular agenda. We have one item, which is continued discussion of citywide work plan project list. City Administrator, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item we've been discussing now for several meetings, trying to evaluate and prioritize all the many, many great projects that the city is looking to undertake. As you're aware, staff had put together, after a number of meetings, staff had put together a listing and prioritization that we think would work, things that could get done based on certain criteria that are listed in your packet. One of the things that we're looking for tonight from staff, there was a number of questions raised at the last, or the first two meetings, first two discussions of these items, but there hasn't been a council action to give a majority, or a, hopefully, a unanimous direction, but at least a majority direction, on which, if any, of these items should be reviewed to move up or down in the prioritization list. As we've discussed with what is perceived as next year's massive amount of work, and you've heard about the projects through all the presentations and what it's going to take to accomplish some of these, if something moves up in the priority list, it's our belief something else is going to have to move down lower and be delayed. Again, as a reminder, the prioritization, whether it's a 1, 2, or 3, doesn't mean, if it's a 1 or a 2, we're going to be working very hard on it diligently in the next year to complete it. If it's a 3, it's going to be put on the, kind of on the side burner, if you will. It doesn't mean it's not going to get attention, it's not going to ever get done, it's going to just simply be delayed, most likely coming back in the next fiscal year or two, when time allows and some of those other projects get done. So with that, if there's any questions, but certainly, we're here to answer them, but staff is looking for direction. If the council, at least at this point, it's not March 5th yet, when we asked for the more clarification, but if there's things that we should start working on now, we'd like to get that direction to get started on.
Okay, thank you, John. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. As I look at these, I just need a little bit of clarifying information like I did on the website. Once I had that information, then I began to agree with how it was prioritized. So my question revolves right now around overseeing the construction of the final phase of Route 56 Streetscape Enhancement Project. I sort of thought that was in the final stages. So I'm assuming you just said that ones and twos would be a priority, so maybe it stays there. But I just, you know, part of me would like to see it be a 1, but I think it has a life of its own, and it's moving along at a pace. Am I correct? Does anybody have any more clarifying information than that?
Community Development Director Messer?
It is under, it is scheduled to be constructed this coming construction season, which will begin this, most likely begin this calendar or this current fiscal year and bleed over into the first part of next fiscal year.
Okay, so it will be happening?
And as a priority to it is something that obviously we expect to invest time in and make sure it gets done properly.
Okay. My next question has to do with the preliminary engineering design for the Prairie Path Trailhead Project. I kind of thought a lot of that funding was already found in grants and different things. Is that going to be held up because it's a 2 and not a 1, or again, twos are going to go along at a reasonable pace because especially this one is, a lot of it's funded?
Twos are items that we expect to be able to advance next year with current resources, current or planned resources.
Okay. And the last thing is a 3, these solar projects. I know a decision package will come up. I guess I'm just hoping that we are, continue to be open to these sorts of things, and only because the state seems to be being proactive on this, these kind of things. So I don't mind it being a 3, I guess, as long as we can keep talking about it and seeking funding and doing that sort of thing. Whenever we decide, I think in our budget meeting in March, we'll be talking about it. So I just wanted to put in my thought that I just hope it continues to be important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Goodman.
I've given some thought to the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago about the strategic plan goals. And what it made me remember was about three years ago, I went to a talk at the IML, which was given by Jen McMahon, where she talked about how important it was to, once you've spent the time and effort and money putting together a plan, like a strategic plan, not to let it just sit on a shelf and get dusty, but to use it and to create action items and to have a project manager who makes sure that there's follow-up. And she and the consultant that we'd worked with on that project sort of co-taught this seminar about accountability and making sure that the small day-to-day actions that could sort of swamp staff's time and effort and energy are looked at in a bigger-picture way, that they're following the bigger-picture strategic plan, and that they've been prioritized properly and funded as a priority by the community. And how using the strategic plan as a tool on a daily basis was a way of keeping those bigger-picture ideas in mind. And I think our staff, by and large, does that. So seeing this as a priority 3 item, when it's, you know, this is 2018. We're talking about our plan for fiscal year 2019, and as you can see, this strategic plan that we spent time and money and effort on is 2015. So to me, that sounds like we're saying it's dusty and sitting on a shelf, and that's disappointing to me. And, you know, Jen is doing great in her new job, I'm sure, and we miss her, and we have a wonderful, capable Assistant City Administrator who's doing a good job, and I'm not trying to minimize her efforts at all. I just think that saying this isn't one of our priorities is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
There was a recommendation to move the, or is it, evaluate the building's security needs for City Hall and the Public Works Garage from number 2 to a number 3 priority. At one of the meetings for the Tourism and Arts Commission in January, the, someone wandered into the building after 7:00 because the front door was open because we were conducting a public meeting, and really had no business in the building, and came into the conference room, or someone from the meeting actually heard someone out there. This person just came in from the cold and wanted to use the phone, but it was kind of scary for four or five people sitting there in the conference room, and there's no one else around. So we really need to look at some of the security that we have that's going on in the evening, and we need to be able to protect the people that work here, plus we need to protect the people who volunteer here. So I am opposed to moving this from a number 2 project or number 2 priority to a number
Okay. Anyone else with comments or questions? Alderman Widener.
Yeah, I agree that there should be an effort to align some of the work plan prioritizations or priorities with the strategic plan goals and also the climate action plan. And, you know, I realize the work plan is a first effort, and that staff is forwarding their ideas as far as what they think from their viewpoint is the highest priority. But as we were doing in the weekly reports for a while, I think we were trying to stay true to the strategic work plan and the other action plans that we've developed and trying to align as many of our efforts as possible with those priorities. So, and then, I guess specifically, last year, there was a solar initiative that was relegated to the fiscal '17, '18 Tier 3 status. And then, there's also a project that I think has been brought forward by Alderman Wilson for the fiscal year 1819, and that project is also a solar project, and it was relegated again to Tier 3. And I guess I'd just like to ask the city administrator in your comments, you said that those could either be moved up, or they could stay the same or fall off eventually. And I just wonder if, you know, what the plans are, because it just seems like the solar initiatives that are, you know, having a favorable reaction from the council members up here are remaining on the Tier 3, will get to it at some point, status, as far as I can see.
Commissioner?
Yes, I believe I said they would be pushed back and delayed. I don't, I specifically said they wouldn't fall off. We wouldn't forget about them, they just wouldn't get done in the next year. They have to be brought forward in a time when the staffing can align with the volume of projects and actually get them accomplished. It's not our intent to remove anything from this list, and it's up to the council. If you all decide you don't want some of these projects on whatever tier or priority they're on, and there's a majority vote to remove them or change the priorities, that's up to you. As far as our staffing plan, they would stay on this list and be re-reviewed. This would also help keep track of them so they don't get lost. Sometimes smaller things can get lost in the day-to-day shuffle of things. This will help us keep track of them so that we don't do that. At this point, I can't project what year those would be able to get done. That's all going to depend on the volume of, a primary thing that is driving everything this coming year is development. I think I can speak for the community, saying we hope that that development continues, maybe not at this pace. We'd like to stay out in front of it and on top of it. We're trying to do our best with that. At some point, the ERP will get, pending council's approval of the project, will get implemented and done. That's going to be an enormous burden, so we've got a horizon. Our staff, the consultant, are rejecting 14 months, 12 months to 14 months. In my many years in city government, usually those things, you find little bumps and hiccups, and they get stretched out a little bit longer than that. We hope we're done in that timeframe, that's what's going to be committed to. But I think that's the best timing we can give right now. Our staff may have some better idea, if they do, perhaps, in terms of timing, if they have a better handle on some of the projects. And, finality, I'm getting some head shaking, they may not have a better handle on that right now. We can certainly keep it on the, it's something we keep in the forefront to discuss and keep an eye on them, because I agree with you, I don't want to have these projects just get lost and disappear. If they're important to the council, to keep moving along, we should pay attention to them and get to them as soon as time can allow.
One of the things that we talked about last year when we were looking at the solar projects was, there was a request, you know, in order to get us started with the solar project, there was a request made of the EAC Committee to help along with the research, and that that would provide staff with some information that they could glean, and they would be able to then take their part and move forward on the solar project, where we would be identifying, you know, opportunities and policies that existed elsewhere. And I just, I guess, assumed that, you know, since that report had been filed with the city staff, that the, you know, solar project would continue to be moved along now at the staff level, and I thought it was, would be incoming this year. So I guess, you know, I'm seeing that Tier 3 sometimes ends up being kind of a delay that may not necessarily meet the agreement of, you know, council members. may not necessarily meet the agreement of, you know, council members who are, are backing and supporting it. So, I don't know if you have a reaction to that. My other comment last week was, with the vast amount of time that we're projecting on ERP, is there any kind of room for flexibility as far as the hours of staff time that can, would be spent on that, so that we might be able to gather some additional time to move tier-three items to tier-one or two, or move tier-two items to tier-one, if there was the flexibility of, you know, a potential change in the hours of time that's projected for the ERP. Those are my comments, thank you.
Assistant City Administrator White?
I would just like to address the comment about the ERP, and I would ask Finance Director Dolestrand to correct any thing I say that is incorrect. But the timeline that was developed on the ERP is, at this point, estimated to be about 14 months. That was based on both the recommendation of the vendor that the city has been working with to implement the ERP, as well as city staff time based on the hours that they're projecting from different departments. If we were to extend that timeline, the vendor themselves has established a schedule for their staff and their project managers and their programmers to be involved with this project. Any extension of time would also require likely additional funds and additional time on their staff to be committed to this project. So, certainly, it's something we could discuss. We, again, we are still in the negotiation and contract review process, but if that is something that the council is, is considering as far as asking staff to extend that project out, that's something we need to know sooner rather than later, so we can have that discussion with the vendor and figure out what that price commitment ends up being if we make that change at this point.
Perhaps a, a good way to do this would be, now, we've got several suggestions for potential changes in the tiers. Everyone can think about that. The next time we discuss that, the aldermen who are interested in making those changes perhaps could bring in a specific recommendation for what is to be moved up and then what needs to be moved down. I think it probably, John makes a good point, that we can't take things from a lower category and move them up without bumping something. We just can't keep adding things to the first, second tiers. Clearly, it's a matter of making the decision of priorities. Because something is a tier-three doesn't mean that we don't believe in it, doesn't mean that we don't want to do it. It only means that we have all these other more immediate, some of which time-sensitive items that have to be addressed. The amount of development that's coming into the community at this point is phenomenal, it's different than we've ever experienced in the past. That has to be dealt with right now, it can't be dealt in the future. The ERP, we're committed to doing that also. As Kevin mentioned, we're talking 7,000 hours of staff time, and I don't know that stretching that out is going to be a good thing to do. I think we need to get it done and get it up and get it operational. So I appreciate what you're saying, I appreciate the fact that there, I have support for the solar idea also. Sometimes, good ideas have to be delayed a little bit because other things take priorities, and that would be my position. But certainly, the final decision is made by the council. Councilmen want to come in with specific ideas of changes to be made, the council can vote on that, and then we live by that. So that's how we accomplish things. So if you have ideas, the next time we discuss this would be, John? Go ahead.
Didn't mean to interrupt your commentary.
That's all right.
What I would request and, and I guess suggest as well, is that certainly aldermen have things they're more interested in. Instead of, certainly whatever you want to bring forward, Alderman, but if, instead of concerning yourself a lot with what could move down, bring in the request to have something moved up. Our staff, that's why we asked for this by March 5th, and any time in between, our staff needs to then get together and figure out if X project moves up, what needs to move down. Because of course, it's not as simple as moving something that administration's supposed to do up and moving something Public Works is doing down. I oversimplified that. We've got to find out what's involved, and maybe your project looks like it's just police, but it involves everyone across the departments. So let us worry about what might have to move around. We can bring that recommendation back, and then you can all chew on that and make a consideration. But I think it would be very difficult for aldermen to try to look in isolation without that background detail or the expertise of our city staff and try to figure out what can move in places. But certainly, you have interest in things, so I would suggest, encourage that those come back and come in a form of a motion, so that if we're going to spend a couple of hours at least, and I don't know how much research, how much background work has to be done, but at least in some meetings, and then some background legwork on the part of the staff, that we know the council is interested in that, so we're not spinning our wheels and not accomplishing what you want. We want to accomplish what you want.
Okay, let's get a couple other folks, and we'll come back. Alderman Ashauer?
The, I understand the concern, everybody has their pet things. I looked at this as a work list for the, for staff to cooperate on projects and eliminate them. I mean, I, the way I see this is, priority-one projects are going to go first, and they're going to fall off the list. Twos are going to move up, some of the ones are going to move down, and the threes are going to move up. And it's about them organizing their time together, seeing who's involved in the projects, and moving it forward. It's a work list. I don't see it slighting anybody. I, I think that it's going to change. And I see things, and I wonder why they're where they're at, but we have limited resources and a whole bunch to do, and, and they're trying to manage their time the best they can, and I support that. I like the idea of it, appreciate the fact that they're trying to make the best use of cooperative time. And I think that we're going to see this change over the course of months, and we see how that goes, and then we can evaluate a little differently and see how, how it's working for them and us. And so...
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
I, I agree that the, the time element here is very important. Staff has only so much time to work with. But also, in looking at it and trying to, from my own perspective here, I'm not so sure how much time is required on each one of these individuals. For instance, the final engineering design on Deal Road, turning lane improvement. Well, it says final engineering design, I thought that was a done thing. Now, are we talking about construction on it? Are we still designing it? And how much time is it going to take from the staff to do that? And that's just a question I don't know, and I don't, unless anybody can throw an answer out, I'm not looking for specific hours yet. But it's just that I can't, reading it, I don't know how much time is involved. Point-o'-drive dedication, I know that's time-sensitive. It has to be done whenever that opportunity presents itself, is the way I understand it. So there's a time, but how many, what are we talking about here? Once that decision is given, that we have to make a decision, are we talking about hours, days, weeks, or months? And I have no way of knowing, but in looking at that, and just like tonight, we had expanding the shredding day initiative to include electronics and prescription, I, how much time is it going to take to do it? I agree with that, I think it's a good proposition, we just heard tonight from the chief. But I, it's just looking at it, trying to determine, how many man-hours are we talking about? Some are going to take a lot of man-hours. I think it's the ERP is one of them. But it's just in, from my, from my own perspective, trying to determine, okay, I agree that this is important, but how much time is it going to do, take for these things? And I wish if we had a breakdown, it would make my job a little easier to determine which one of these projects I feel could be postponed, delayed, or moved from a position.
Ron, comments?
I was just going to address the, the question about that particular project, which was Deal Road. Right now, we're in the preliminary engineering design process, and next year, we would be doing the final engineering design process. And it's not necessarily, the city staff is not actually drawing the project, but city staff would be coordinating with all the stakeholders that are involved with that, which there's private property owners, IDOT, it's, the, the project would be funded to one of the IDOT funding programs that were, that we received a grant for. DuPage County and the various consultants that would be working for the city on designing and bidding out that type of project. So, it's more of a coordination effort on the city's perspective. I don't have the specific numbers, but we could certainly provide, we have estimated how many hours we expect to have invested in something like that. So, on, at least from the, I'm going to speak from the Community Development Department's standpoint, and we've, we could provide, if requested, estimate of hours on the various projects that our department's involved with. I would just say that if it's on the list and it has our name by it, Community Development, it's a significant, we anticipate it's more than 10 hours. I mean, it's a significant material amount of staff time that would have to be invested to accomplish or advance those projects to any significant degree.
I would, I would just observe too, that another lens that you have to look at these projects through is not just the amount of time involved, but how many balls can staff keep in the air at the same time? The more they're trying to keep in the air, whether they're big balls, little balls, or whatever, the more difficult it is to accomplish things. So sometimes, it's good to concentrate on the things that are the top priority and the most time-sensitive and the most involving projects, and put some of the smaller projects aside, just because they can tend to be a distraction and make it more difficult to accomplish what you need to accomplish. So, an additional lens to look at things besides the time factor, is the distraction factor and the difficulty of focusing on things that the council has already identified as priorities.
Alderman Widener, do you want to talk again?
Nothing, I'd just like to reiterate, I guess, the strategic plan goals, and if any of these could be aligned, so that we know that we're following the strategic plans and the other action plans that we've, I guess, paid consultant fees for and had our priorities, they had to help, you know, together with staff, the community, and the council developed citywide initiatives, it would be good to know which ones attach themselves to the citywide priorities and the action plans.
Would it be helpful, would that be difficult to accomplish?
I'll take that as a question. I mean, I don't think that aligning it to this, identifying what strategic plan goal is there, I think that'll, that'll probably take mostly Christina and I, a matter of hours, not tens of hours or anything, so I think that can be done fairly easily. We're just doing it right now in the budget documents, we're doing it in this weekly report, so I think we can do that pretty quickly.
Why don't we do this again, just to establish the precedent, why don't you make a motion to have staff do that, and then if the council agrees with it, we can have them address it?
Okay, a motion to request staff to align the fiscal year 18, 19, annual work plan with citywide strategic plan goals and the climate action plan priorities.
Is it just those two? The strategic plan and climate action plan, or other things like the bike plan, the sidewalk priority plan, the TIF plans? There's many other plans. We've been doing the strategic plan, I want to make sure I understand the direction. Sorry, you didn't even get a second, I shouldn't be asking you.
Yeah, I think those are...
Second. Okay, discussion? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just think those are the two highest priority ones that we can, that would be able to be expedited. I realize we're on a timeframe of trying to get this done by March 5th. I don't want to add all the implementation plans and things that we have on the books and turn this into a laborious task. But I think those, those two are the major ones that we should be looking at, that we've committed ourselves to.
I can agree with the strategic plan, that makes sense. The climate action plan is another one of those individual plans, and I'm not sure is the same, I guess, magnitude as, as the strategic plan. To see what aligns with the strategic plan makes sense to me. The climate action plan is another one of those ancillary plans that is not at the same magnitude, at least from my perspective.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very big on the climate action plan, but at this point, faced with this ERP and strategic plan number one, which was the Route 59 corridor, which it looks like a whole bunch of number ones fit into that, I, I think I would, at this point, rather just see the strategic plan. Because just be, it's, I think it's this ERP that's just, as I listen to the staff talk, it's just almost overwhelming what they have to face the next 14 to 16 months. And I think once we do that, I think a whole lot of stuff is going to shift. And so, I, at this point, I, I wouldn't always say this, but I, I think that our strategic plan, especially Alderman Goodman spoke to this, needs to be the driver right now. In 16 months, I may say something else, but right now, that's, I, I just think it becomes overwhelming.
Alderman Goodman?
Well, I think this is a great opportunity to consider the strategic plan implementation steps, because a lot of the strategic plan implementation steps are on this list. And so, considering it in that context is ideal. I don't think it would be a significantly more difficult thing to say, one or two of these things also relate to the climate action plan, so I think throwing that in there and asking staff to consider it, because this is just for the purposes of this discussion, it's a pretty minor addition to the amount of time that they would need to spend on it, so I'm totally comfortable with that. But I, I do think the, the main thing we're going to want to consider here is the relation of this list to the strategic plan.
Okay, anybody else?
Alderman Widener, the city work plan with the strategic plan, is that what your motion is? Thank you.
And the climate action plan, that's part of his motion.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion? Alderman Ashauer?
Did you agree to make it the strategic plan, to modify your requirement, or are we taking a vote on that? I, I, the clerk just asked if it was the strategic plan or if you'd agree to that.
It was both, the strategic action plan and the climate action plan. Because I, you know, I think when we passed the climate action plan unanimously, within that plan, we agreed to certain measures that we would be moving forward with, and I don't think that we've had any kind of progress report or, you know, we, we don't know where we're at on that. So it's much the same thing, if you develop plans, we ought to prioritize them and follow them, and at least look at it. I don't think that, you know, looking over too plans to come back to us with seeing how they align with the current work plan as proposed would be too labor-intensive. So, I guess I would like to include both.
Okay. Anybody want to add any others? We have multiple plans we could add. All right, motion and a second. Let's do a roll call. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener? Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Anybody else have any other ideas for action this evening? Otherwise, keep them in mind for the next time we discuss this, and we'll do the same process. Somebody have an idea, we'll have a motion, and we'll vote on it. Comment?
I have an idea.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
And?
Motion to adjourn, and it was enthusiastically seconded by Alderman Goodman. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, thank you.